Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Villa Park City Council. I hereby call the meeting to order. Alyssa, will you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you. Councilwoman Miles?
Present.
Councilman McBride?
Here.
Councilman Frackleton?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Yeah.
And Mayor Jones?
Here.
All present.
Thank you so much. Tonight, I would like to ask Councilman Frackleton to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Everyone, please stand and face the flag and say the Pledge of Allegiance with me. Here we go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The Villa Park City Council and staff welcome you to this meeting and we encourage your participation. If you wish to address the City Council, please complete and submit a speaker card to the city clerk. Speaker cards can be found at the entrance to the City Council chambers. Speakers will be called up individually during public comment section of the meeting or during the item they wish to speak on. Once the public comment period has concluded for an item, no additional speakers will be taken. Speakers will be limited to a time period of five minutes. Speakers were also able to submit comments in writing by 3:00 PM today and those comments will be placed in the official record. So now we go to our presentations and we do have a couple extra presentations tonight, so I would like to call up Ed Carter with the Villa Park Community Services Foundation with an announcement.
Yes, okay. So I like to be a man of my word. Mr. Frackleton said, "Are you gonna sing tonight?" And I said, "Yes." So I am gonna sing tonight. So here we go. Here comes Santa Claus, here comes Santa Claus, right down Santa Claus Lane. Vixen blitzing, all his reindeer's pulling on their reins. Bells are ringing, children singing, all is merry and bright. So hang your stocking and say your prayers, 'cause Santa Claus comes tonight. Voila! So this is the funnest part of my year with the foundation. So this year, it's the 2025 Dryland Boat Parade with the theme of Reeling in the Holidays. It's the 27th Annual Villa Park Dryland Boat Parade. We'll roll into our city streets on Sunday, December 14th, beginning at 5:00 PM in front of Villa Park High. Sponsored by the Villa Park Community Services Foundation, everyone is encouraged to participate, whether it be getting your crew to decorate a unique craft to enter an award competition or plan a cool neighborhood party to jingle in some bells at the entourage of vessels. Registration forms and maps and more info are available on the foundation website and in City Hall. Entrance fee is $40 per craft. Also, don't forget the Santa Tour on December 8th, followed by the Christmas lighting, Christmas tree lighting with Santa and the Villa Park Choir carolers at City Hall, and also the Hanukkah celebration on December 17th at City Hall. One of the true pleasures of the foundation board each year is to float many considerations for the grand marshal of the parade before we decide on an individual, couple, or close-knit family that shares their ongoing thoughtfulness with others. Many are recognized for their volunteer contributions and friendship through organizations like the Villa Park Women's League, Villa Park Rotary, and of course, the foundation. Or perhaps being a board member of We Give Thanks and serving turkeys to those in need at the Honda Center on Thanksgiving Day. Or assisting foster youth through the Eddie Nash Foundation is always appreciated. Their professions also blend special needs of the community, too. Do you have a tattoo that needs to be removed, anyone? It has been noted that Villa Park has almost as many animals as it has humans, dogs of all breeds and makes, make for many daily interesting meet and greets, but when some alpacas were noted to be walked, they created quite an amazing conversation. While they are no longer alive, the thought of them may give you the real clue as to the 2025 Grand Marshals. He is the first person to receive what I call the Villa Park Hat Trick Award, Rotarian of the Year, Villa Park Distinguished Citizen, and Grand Marshal, all in the same year. Unfortunately, our Grand Marshals could not be here this evening. They were called away to treat Santa at his Mount Fuji hideaway and are en route back here tonight. Fortunately, we have a few elves here to represent our Grand Marshals. Yes, thanks to Jay and Terry Apple Mom for adding so much sparkle to our Villa Park Hidden Jewel, and they are our 2025 Grand Marshals.
Oh, good. I like it. Perfect.
Oh, look who's here!
Please come up to the podium so we can see you.
Tell Eddie it's you.
You've taken our place! We have the real ones. We have the real Apple Moms.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Hey, Ed? 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 Quick question. I thought I heard you say that the Santa Tour was on the 8th? Is it on, I thought it was the 6th?
I think I said it was the 14th.
No, the Sanit, San, San... No, Santa Tour.
Santa Tour is the 6th.
6th.
Did I give it the 8th? I didn't give it the 8th.
You said the 8th.
I, did I, I said the 6th, right there. Okay. It's the 6th.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, well...
It's the 6th.
That singing got me off.
Well, I just wanted to make sure...
I'll let sing it.
Yeah, for everyone listening, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Would you like to say a few words?
I've been working on my wave. Thank you so much.
Can we get a couple pictures and then we'll get out of here?
Yeah.
Okay. Should we hold ourselves? We don't need these anymore.
Oh, up there.
Forgot about the International Daylight.
Yeah, we did. Sheriff Alter, he does like to come up? Oh, sure. These are great. That's great.
You can, you can thank, you can thank Mark Couli.
Thank you, Mark Couli.
Thank you so much. And then, moving on, last month, we recognized Kayla Chan with Scouting America Troop 691 for our wonderful new podium, but her family was unable to make it due to illness. So we are very happy that her and her family are able to join us this evening. Kayla was made this amazing podium for us as part of her Eagle Scout project, and we sincerely appreciate it. We have a certificate for you, but first, if we could have a presentation as well for you from Supervisor Don Wagner's office.
Kayla, I know I can't look at you and do this because I have to face this way, but thank you. This is beautiful. You did a wonderful job. I'm so proud of you. Orange County Supervisor Don Wagner is thrilled. I learned something new. I did not know that our Scouting America now has women in it, and so I was thrilled to see that we do an Eagle Scout, Scouting America Award. And I want to thank you very much for your hard work, for your enthusiasm, and for doing what you have done to make Villa Park even better, because it's such a great little city. Again, on behalf of Orange County Supervisor, thank you very much. And if you'd come up, I'll give you this. And look at you. There you go. Yeah, oh, no, oh, sure. I need a picture, too.
And Kayla, can you...
What do we get with the council, Will? The council?
Yeah. Well, could she say a few words? Because I think a lot of people are curious as to the Eagle Scout Award and the, and the changes that have been made to the program.
Oh, yeah. Um, it's kinda weird. So I'm in scouting. My troop is actually in Irvine, 'cause that's where I originally lived. My, my troop, Troop 691, originally did not have a girls' troop. So when I joined, I actually created a girls' troop, and I am the first eagle, female Eagle Scout in my troop, which is really nice. Yeah. Yeah.
Yes, thank you so much. If you and your family would like to come forward, the council has... Play fast. What made you decide to do this as your project?
Even though my troop is in Irvine, I still really wanted to help my immediate community, which would be Villa Park. So I went over and asked the city manager if he had any projects, and he came up with this, so I thought that was awesome.
Well, thank you.
I'll be the door blocker. Congratulations, parents.
And the parents, you wanna come in? Yes. Yeah, maybe on either side of the podium?
Yeah. Okay. Nice. Awesome. Very nice. Beautiful. Yeah. Well done.
All right, thank you. Kayla did all the work.
Good father.
It is an outstanding enhancement to our City Council chambers, so thank you so much. Next, we would like to move on to our Distinguished Citizen for the month of November. So what I really wanted to do this month is honor one of our unsung heroes here in the city of Villa Park, and that is Nancy Swirly. She works quietly behind the scenes to help our community thrive. For decades, Nancy has given her time and talent to the organizations that support our children, strengthen our schools, and uplift those in our community. Nancy's path of service began when her children, Nicole and Adam, entered school. Like many parents, she volunteered. Then Nancy took it to another level and went on to serve in almost every role that those parent groups had to offer. Whether she was president, organizing the freshman orientation barbecue, or balancing the books as treasurer, Nancy approached each task with the same enthusiasm and skill that she would bring to any full-time job. Her leadership and reliability quickly set her apart, and soon, she was supporting not just one school, but all of them. One of Nancy's proudest accomplishments is being a founding member of the National League of Young Men, NLYM, the Orange Villa Park chapter. She was tapped for the treasurer position immediately, and she continues to serve NLYM as their bookkeeper. The treasurer job in any organization is a hard one to fill and comes with many challenges. So Nancy has become the backbone of many of our local nonprofits by doing the bookkeeping for local groups such as National Charity League, Serrano Elementary PTO, Sarah Villa Middle School PFSO, Villa Park High School PFSO, VPHS Baseball Boosters, VPHS Gridiron Boosters, and so many more. She also does the taxes for other school-based nonprofit organizations at Villa Park High School and Canyon High School. Nancy's desire to uplift others extends beyond our community as well. For many years, she has served the Philanthropic Educational Organization for Women, or also known as PEO, an organization that dates back to 1869 with over 400 chapters in California. They help provide funding and scholarships to young women seeking education and opportunity. Nancy's own story is as wonderful as her community work. Nancy grew up in Morton Grove, Illinois, and met her husband Alan in college at the University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign. Alan grew up in Evingston, and in a charming twist of fate, Alan's mom and Nancy's dad both worked at Sears and knew of each other long before Nancy and Alan ever crossed paths. When the couple decided to marry, Nancy planned their entire wedding in just one month, which is a testament to her ability to organize, manage details, and keep calm under pressure. Alan had a job in California working on the space shuttle, so they married in 1982 and headed out to California the day after that wedding. Nancy and Alan settled in Villa Park in 1995 after a stint in Roland Heights. Their daughter Nicole was going to be entering kindergarten, and they were looking for a great neighborhood with great schools. Kristy Covington, who is another VP, VP Distinguished Citizen, knocked on their door before they ever even moved in to welcome them to the neighborhood. Today, Nancy works for College Guidance, a local business providing college consulting services to local students, which is yet another way she helps our local students thrive. Nancy Swirly embodies what it means to give back to our community. The city of Villa Park is better and more productive because of her dedication. We thank her for the generous spirit she brings to everything she touches. And Nancy, before we give you our presentation, we also have a presentation for you from Supervisor Don Wagner's office.
Again, I always think this is so funny, 'cause I'm talking to you, but I'm talking to her. Orange County Supervisor Don Wagner. Nancy, after hearing everything Nicole said, I have to say, you are definitely the hidden jewel in Villa Park. Thank you so much for all that you do for our schools, for keeping people. I would be the worst treasurer in the world. Nobody wants me to. Only thing I know about money is you spend it. So I admire very much what you've done and what you continue to do. And on behalf of Orange County Supervisor, I thank you very much for what you give to this beautiful city of Villa Park. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, and if you'd like to come forward, the council will come down and present you with our certificate. Yes, you can just ask anyone who runs a nonprofit in the city of Villa Park, and everyone knows Nancy. Thank you so much for everything. So next, for our presentations, we had Orange County Sheriff's Department, but we don't have the captain here this evening?
Yes, the sheriff was called out, so we'll provide the report as soon as we receive it to you guys.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much. So next is our Orange County Fire Authority presentation. So Chief Federman.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Jones and respected council members. For the response statistics for Division 4, for September 23rd to October 27th, there were 23 emergency incidents, and that included 16 emergency medical aides, and then another seven miscellaneous calls. That included odor checks, hazardous conditions, auto alarms, for a total of 23 incidents. In addition, as we come into the holidays, the safety message is the holiday cooking safety. So I'll just cover a couple of those briefly. The intent behind the holiday cooking safety message is to help protect your family and home this holiday season by practicing cooking safety. More cooking fires are reported on Thanksgiving than any other day of the year, followed by Christmas and Christmas Eve. So as you see, we're coming into that, that season. We're out of wildfire season, we're into flooding and cooking safety season, so. So a few of the bullet points, stay in the kitchen while frying, grilling, or broiling food. Unintended cooking is the leading cause of home cooking fires. Check food often while cooking and use a timer to remind you your food is on the stove. Wear short, close-fitting, and tightly-rolled sleeves when cooking so you don't catch your sleeves on fire. And then keep cooking areas clear of pot holders, paper towels, wooden utensils, other cookbooks, and other fire hazards that could be too close to the stove, oven, or kitchen appliance area. And lastly, if there is a fire on your stove, cover the pan, turn off the stove, and don't try to move the pan to the sink, and certainly never pour water on the grease fire. And 911 is my favorite number, so get that, that phone number, call them, get the emergency responders on the way. And with that, it's, uh, it's been a great honor to serve the city for the last year, and I am retiring. I think you all heard that. And then Chief Morgenstern is being promoted to Division Chief and taking over my position, so you'll be in much better hands with Chief, Chief Morgenstern. And that'll be effective next Friday. So like I said, it's been a great honor serving the city and working with all you, and Steve has made it very, very easy to work with the city, so I'm very appreciative and humbled to have had the opportunity.
Thank you, council. Do you have any questions on his report?
No, just a comment of thank you for your service and, and best wishes on your future endeavors.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Yeah, and I'd just like to read from the memo that we all received, just a little background on Chief Federman. The chief began his career in 1996 as a professional firefighter and has spent the last 30 years climbing the ranks and expanding the impact of his service. From firefighter, paramedic, engineer, captain, and battalion chief, to hazmat program manager, ECC duty officer, USNR Program Manager of California Task Force 5, and as of February 2023, Division Chief, first of ECC and now of Division 4. So this memo says, "A seasoned leader with a passion for incident management, Chief Federman will remain part of the OCFA family in an extra-help capacity as an IC on our AH, A-H-I-M-T..." This is, is that correct?
Yeah, it's All Hazard Incident Management Team.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And as a Plan Section Chief on the FEMA First. He will also continue his work in emerging technology in wildland fires as the Senior Vice President of Public Safety Strategy at Watch Duty, which was an app that we were promoting during our emergency management seminars. It really is a fantastic tool. So we really wish you all the best. We have a certificate for you as well, so if you can come forward to the DIAS and we will present you with our certificate. Thank you again for your service. Now, at this time, we will hear comments from members of the public to address any off-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items unless authorized by law. We will also be hearing public comments on each agenda item. Alyssa, is there anyone present or who wrote in from the public who would like to comment on an off-agenda item?
Yes, we have two. The first one is Mike Teyes.
Thank you, please approach the podium.
Pronounced Tayes, by the way. Close enough, though.
Sorry.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Nicole Jones, Mayor Pro Tem Wu, and council members Frackleton, Miles, and McBride. I have to say, before I start, I've spoken in front of many council meetings, city councils, this is the nicest one I've ever been to. Unbelievable. But my name is Mike Tayes, and I'm here with my neighbor Heather Flessing, Flessing, and we've been, I've been a resident for the city of Orange for 29 years. I'm also a retired officer for the Los Angeles City Fire Department for 38 years. So he's a rookie. I'm here to discuss a small intersection corner of Villa Park meets in Santiago Boulevard. I'd like to discuss the evolution of the intersection. Over the last 29 years, traffic patterns have changed, and they've exploded due to the many factors. The 55 freeway is packed, so they take Santiago, and it's mired in massive traffic jams. Auto's taking Meats as an alternative to either Tustin or Santiago Boulevard. Students from four major schools in both Orange and Villa Park all let out at the same time, combined with electric bikes, students, drivers distracted by cell phones, social media, and an exploding population that's happened over the last 10 or 15 years. Over those 29 years, it's an annual event to be left without power because the driver takes out the power poles and the transformer there at the corner of intersection of Santiago and Meats. Some of these have lasted for over a week. We've had cars in backyards, excessive speed, descending Meats, sometimes at over 75 miles and, 75 miles an hour in a 35 mile an hour zone. I've, I've brought some pictures for you to look at and use as a reference. And that house that you see right there is Heather's house right there. And numerous near misses and accidents, basically on a weekly basis, and I just heard about a recent fatality we've had there. To give you a little backstory, we're also working with the city of Orange. They've been proactive with additional PD officers in both morning and afternoon, which is showing great promise issuing additional traffic citations. We've discussed with the city of Orange, traffic bullards there at the corner to protect the power pole and the, and the power transformer. We'd like to work with the city of Villa Park's engineering and public works with an additional solution, possibly rumble strips up Meats there. Taking into consideration road noise and additional speed sign to remind drivers to slow down to a safe speed. We understand that these are small fixes, but they're very low-cost fixes, and I believe that they will have great results in the safety of that intersection. We understand the issue is complex, but it's time to address this growing problem with the population and the amount of students that go there. We've had many near misses with the students. So I'd like to thank you. I'd like to thank you for your time and for your consideration, respectively. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alyssa, our next speaker?
Heather Flessing. Good evening, council members and mayor, and thank you for the time you're providing for me to speak with you about this. My name's Heather Flessing, and I live in the city of Orange at 2546 East Ridingway, so right on the corner of Meats and Santiago. And my husband and I moved into our home in 2018, and in those seven years, almost eight years now, there have been over 20 accidents, 21 with the most recent one that happened. So that's about three every single year. And that's day, night, doesn't matter the time, it's all times of day. And so in the last four and a half years alone, two of those accidents have directly impacted my family. In August 2020, a car ran a red light and hit another car, and it T-boned them, caused that car to roll several times before it crashed into the brick wall around our house. Debris flew into our flower bed, flower beds, and into our back patio, and we had to rebuild our back patio, and we had to rebuild part of the wall. Thankfully, that person had insurance, whereas the second time, that happened this last March, the person was uninsured. So this was even worse. This happened back in March of this year. A car took a left, turned too fast in the rain, and ended up getting hit by another car, ran into our wall, and it destroyed a large section of our wall, came down into our backyard, hit our house, and flung bricks about 30 feet into our back patio. Now, it's made my family a bit nervous to be in our backyard now. We don't even really go out in the back at all, because we're afraid that there's something that's going to happen to our family or our friends while we're back there. But this really isn't just about property damage anymore. You know, we have those four schools that let out. My daughter's going to be going to one of those schools in a couple of years. You know, she's two, and I'm thinking of her future, and I'm looking forward to her getting to attend those schools, us walking to school. But I'm nervous about that whole thing. So how can I feel safe letting her play in our backyard or walk around with me when we have people who are going up on sidewalks and crashing into our wall? Now, earlier this year, I reached out to the City of Orange and started getting the process going, of getting a survey going, so that we could find out what could be done. And I want to make this intersection safe for my family, yes, and all the kids. And so they have looked into ways to improve the intersection. They're applying for some grants to improve some aspects of it. And we've also had increased police presence during this time, more ticketing. So they have been working to get that intersection a little safer. And now that they have, we wanted to approach you to see if you could help with the small section that just leads down into that intersection on Meats. And I know you guys don't have a large portion of that road, but there is that small area where they're coming right down into that intersection. So our two small suggestions are just to have those rumble strips, you know, to get people just be aware that there's that intersection coming up, and a sign just to warn them of their, you know, the speed limit, that hey, there's an intersection, slow down, even just a slow down sign, not necessarily a speed limit with a number on it, so they know how fast they're going, but just a hey, slow down, there's an intersection. So, you know, I really care about the safety of our neighborhoods, of the people who live in both Villa Park and Orange, who go through that intersection daily. And I really want to work together with you guys to help make that intersection safer. So thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Alyssa, are there any other public comments?
No, that's all.
Thank you very much. Now, we will move into our agendized public hearings. Our first hearing is the review to wave reading in full of all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda. I will now open the hearing. Staff, please give the staff report.
Thank you, mayor. This is our regular agendized item, that is to expedite the meeting and move it along efficiently, and we recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak at this hearing?
No.
Council members, if there are no questions or discussion, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion on this item.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you. Please record your vote.
And that passes 5-0.
Thank you. Now, we will consider our consent calendar. All the items on the consent calendar are considered routine and are usually enacted by one motion approving the recommended action listed on the agenda. Any member of the city council, staff, or public may request an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion or separate action. Council members, are there any items from numbers two through three that you would like to remove from the consent calendar?
No, but a question. How come there aren't minutes from the October meeting? Is it just not ready?
They weren't ready because our meeting was moved up a week due to the Thanksgiving holiday.
That's what I thought. Okay, just wanted to make sure everyone knew that. Thank you.
Are there any on this thing? Anyone want to remove an item? Okay. Then, could I get a motion to approve all consent items?
So moved?
Thank you. Please record your vote.
And that passes 5-0.
Thank you very much. Now, we will discuss the city manager report. Alyssa, would you like to give the report?
Yes. So for the report, so we still have not received a response from HCD. The report was, that you guys approved, was submitted on November 1st. They have 60 days to respond, so we could hear responses late of the end of December. And after this past rainstorm, there was no damage to anything in the city, and that is all.
Great. That's wonderful to hear. Okay, now we will move on to...
Question for city manager. Do we have any update on the flock camera issue or what we're doing with that?
No, there's no update.
Thank you.
Now, we will move on to mayor and council member meeting attendance report, starting with Law Enforcement Advisory Committee. There was no meeting, so we'll go to Villa Park Community Services Foundation. Councilman Frackleton.
Okay. Well, I think Ed Carter probably did a better job than I of giving us all the update of what's going on, so I will let that stand. How's that? I can sing. I will not be reprising the singing of Ed Carter, but thank you.
Not even a verse from Here Comes Santa Claus. You know, nothing, huh?
Okay, and I don't believe he mentioned the Hanukkah event.
He did, December 17th.
Oh, he did. Yes, okay, just to emphasize. Okay, thank you so much. Next is Orange Unified's School District City Schools Committee. There was no meeting. So then we will move to Bridges at Kramer Place Advisory.
No meeting.
Okay. Then, Orange County Fire Authority, Councilman Frackleton.
No meeting, but is now a good time to talk about fire-related stuff? Okay. Well, first off, I want to thank my fellow council, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and fellow council for two wonderful dinners that we did over at Fire Station 23, November 2nd and November 11th, Veterans Day. We took care of our two full shifts at Fire Station 23 with just an appreciative dinner, and it was outstanding food, great conversation, and I really think our team that takes care of Villa Park appreciated it very much. So thank you all for doing that. That was really terrific. I also met with, the union president reached out to me and asked to meet with me, which I did, and he kind of gave me an update of what their hopes and dreams are going forward, especially with their contract coming up in March of '27. I made no commitments whatsoever, but told him I was happy to listen to everything they had to say. I met with Chief Capo Bianco, the EMS chief regarding, and also TJ McGovern, the operations chief, regarding some ongoing issues in the county, having to do with the fact that Orange County is really lagging behind in what their paramedics can do in the field. If you live in LA, Riverside, San Bernardino, San Diego, you can receive whole blood from a paramedic. A child who's drowned can be intubated in the field, getting their airway going again. But Orange County's EMS does not allow our paramedics to do it, and I really think we're lagging behind. So it's become one of my calls, and I'm trying to move that ball forward. So I've been meeting with them and trying to come up with a strategy to do that. And that's it for fire.
Thank you so very much. Next is Orange County Library Advisory Board.
No meeting.
Thank you. Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District?
Our meetings are on this Thursday, but we do have a report that because of the rains, there are no new West Nile virus mosquito samples, so that's a good thing. But mosquitoes here are year-round, so you still need to especially tiptot, take action from any of the standing water that might have resulted from any of the rains.
Thank you very much. Next is Orange County Older Adults Advisory Commission.
Thank you. So, a couple of things on this. One, I was sent to the C4A Conference, which is the California Association of Area Agencies on Aging, which was November 5th through 7th, 4th through 7th. This year, it was in Garden Grove. Last year, it was in San Jose. And it's a collection of all the area agencies on aging from all over the state of California, and get together and share information and ideas. And the two main takeaways, one that you've heard me say over and over and over again, is a lot, the majority of older adults don't realize or have any knowledge of the services that are available to them, whether it's in Orange County, or Kern County, or whatever county it may be. And actually, it was 72% of older Californians report having problems knowing what services are available in their specific community. And then the other one was kind of, well, two more points. One is really focusing on trying to make aging in place a priority. And that would be aging in place, like in your home, and getting away from the skilled nursing facilities. And then the other one goes along with the two workshops that were held here, that when you have the emergency response, when you need to look at, not you, but the community needs to realize that those older adults that have to evacuate, some of them don't want to go or can't go because their needs, they don't have their needs met wherever that new place that they're being evacuated to, or they can't get out of their home because of their limitations and disabilities. And they gave us some really very disturbing statistics on the Palisade fires, and that the majority of the deaths there were older adults who were not able to evacuate their home because they were limited with their mobility and what they needed to take with them. So I think there's always a room for improvement on that. And then our general meeting was last Friday, and we had, again, a reminder about Alzheimer's and dementia. So real quick, dementia is the umbrella, if you will. And then within that, there's upwards of like 200 very specific dementia-related diseases, Alzheimer's being the one that's the most common and the most recognizable. So what they're really trying to get people to do is go talk to your doctor and ask for a cognitive test, because they're finding that some of the age-related dementia symptoms may not actually be dementia at all. It could be related to high blood sugar. It could be related to high blood pressure. It could be a medical comorbidity that does not have to deal with a degeneration of, you know, your neurodegeneration of your ability to process and remember and whatnot. And then, so getting a cognitive test by your doctor is a really great way. And one of the things they stressed is, as we age, there's a normal amount of memory loss. And so people always say, oh, my gosh, I can't remember where I placed my keys, and it was kind of put in this position. And if you're wondering if you have a mom, or a dad, or a husband, or a sister, or whatever, and you're not sure if it's a dementia-related event or not, so if you're someone who perhaps, let's say you can't find your keys, that doesn't mean you have dementia or an Alzheimer's-type event. If you can retrace your steps, and you say, okay, well, I know I had to open the door, and then I had to go put the groceries away, your memory loss is probably not related to dementia. It's probably just an old age. You're getting older, and your brain cells aren't regenerating, so you are losing some. So that cognitive test is extremely important. And then, one of the things that they're finding is challenge yourself. So even though you can't regrow new brain cells, you can recreate synapses. So if you normally go grocery shopping, and you always start in the produce side, go start in the dairy side, and challenge yourself. And then also movement, and making sure that you constantly, you know, don't have to go run a 5K or whatever, but take that extra walk, take the stairs, anything that's going to challenge your brain that creates new synapses. So it's kind of like, if your brain is aging, you also have the ability to make those new connections. So you might be depleting some, but you're adding some. So that was kind of the takeaway with that. That's it.
Great. Thank you so much. Next is Orange County Sanitation District.
The board meeting is tomorrow, and I will report last month's meeting in last month's council meeting.
Great. Thank you so much. Now, we will hear individual council member information items or announcements, and why don't we start at this end with Councilwoman Miles?
Great, thank you. So I am part of the Orange County Careers Master Plan Aging, so I've been put on action team for the resource guide, which is really a place close to my heart, as, you know, we were able to successfully get that ad in John Wayne Airport. And again, I just gave the statistic about, so many people don't know of how many resources and what resources are made available to them. So it's an action committee that meets twice a week via Zoom, and we're putting out two resource guides with the OC Navigator. One is for caregivers, and one is for older adults, and tying that in. I participated in the opening day Field of Valor by the Foundation of Orange, and that was probably my sixth time doing that, and it's always amazing. And I love the flyovers, and there's a lot of work and time, and it's a beautiful event, and I really appreciated going to that. I enjoyed doing the dinner for both nights for the inch in 23, and so always love supporting our first responders. See, we have a vector control executive meeting on 11:13. Sorry, that's my kid calling, wondering what dinner is, probably. And then budget and finance, we also did last week. And then, let's see, what else? I write in pencil on this. Oh, this morning, went to the Serrano Water District Board Meeting, where they had a presentation from Irvine Ranch, and then Water District. And then, one of the things, we've had this family, the Fraziers in Villa Park, who for the past five years, almost six years, have done an amazing thing, where if somebody doesn't have a place to go, or anyone to eat with for Thanksgiving, Elizabeth and her family make Thanksgiving dinner, and it's like a drive-through, and they're doing it again this year. And so we always try and make sure that if anyone wants to participate by helping with some of the donation items, please contact me. I'm going to put this list of what they still need on my social media, but really appreciate them. I think she had said that last year, they did over 560 meals for Thanksgiving. So, and she cooks, they start weeks, well, days in advance, but weeks in advance collecting it. So really appreciate that she does that. And it's the kids, everyone gets involved. So really appreciate them doing that, and I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. And I'm looking forward to, I guess the next thing would be our Santa tour on the 6th. So, that's it.
Thank you very much. Let's hop down there to Councilman McBride.
First, I want to thank Councilman Frackleton for organizing the fire dinners. We had a great time, and, you know, most presidents are not aware that there's four firemen in that station any given time, around the clock. And so we enjoyed feeding them and had a terrific time at both of the nights that we met the two different shifts. So we're in good hands. I do Meals on Wheels substituting now for Leslie Jacoby, and so it's always good to connect again to the older group. We pack the meals for them. I did the, hosted the Villa Park Women's League Gourmet Night. So gourmet is difficult sometimes in the way, but we had 12 folks at our house this last one. So it was, again, a wonderful way to meet the community, and I encourage our people to get involved with the Women's League and the different venues that they offer for participation. Finally, we're going to feed the families at the Ronald McDonald House tomorrow night. So we'll be there. We have over 70 families are at the facility. So that'll be always a very heartwarming event. So thank you.
Great. So much. Councilman Frackleton?
Okay, on November 8th, I went to Serravilla Middle School, where a group of alums from Serravilla, and of course Villa Park and the elementary schools, got together and honored a very important teacher, Maurice Preach Lyerla. And he was a teacher at Villa Park Elementary, I think, and I could be wrong, starting in the late 50s. And then when Serravilla opened in the mid 60s, he moved over to Serravilla as one of the founding teachers, and was there until the 90s, I believe, late 90s. So these were people mostly who were in their 70s and 80s that were coming to honor him, because they had him either at the elementary school or at Serravilla. But it was great, because I got to get up and tell them that our mayor really wanted to be there, but her sons had water polo. But our mayor was the first student of Preach Lyerla to become a member of the Villa Park City Council, and I was proud to be the second one. And who knows, maybe... And who knows, maybe someday a majority of Lyerla students will be up here. But it was a really nice event, and there's a lovely plaque outside the classroom he had in the East Polygon, if you ever want to go check it out. On the same day, I ran over to Handy for the Field of Valor. That was my first time being at the opening ceremony of that event. And it was nice to see Councilwoman Miles there and Pat Buttrick there. And it was really terrific. It's very impressive, all those flags. The flyover of the World War II era airplanes was great. Judge Carter gave a wonderful keynote address, a really, really terrific event. November 17th, last night, we attempted to have the group home task force meeting here in City Hall, but we didn't get a quorum. But I do hope that the task force stays together and can give us some good recommendations come the new year after HCD hopefully gives us our blessing as well. And then this morning, I went to the Toronto Water Board meeting, and Councilwoman Miles was there as well. And it was a presentation from Irvine Ranch Water District, who would really like to take over Toronto Water. And it was interesting to hear what they had to say. And I feel confident that our Toronto Water Board's going to make the best decision for us. And that's pretty much everything I have to report.
Great. Thank you so much. And, yeah, Mr. Lyerla was one of those teachers that was just a truly special educator and really cared and got involved with his students. And, yeah, he was amazing. I was sorry to miss that.
He took 40 of us to Washington DC, and at the time, it seemed normal. Now, as an adult, I think that's insane, taking 40 8th graders to Washington DC.
Was it him and Mr. Peterson?
Mr. Mann.
And Mr. Mann, I think, yeah. And I think Mr. Gilstrap did it for a while, too.
Oh, yeah, probably.
So now, I mean, yeah, we were lucky to have incredible group of teachers over there, so it was great. Thank you so much. Next, Mayor Protem Wu.
And November is pretty light for me. But again, everyone, I do thank Councilmember Frackleton organizing the dinner at Station 23. I enjoy meeting those firefighters. One thing Councilmember Frackleton forgot to mention is next week, we are going to host 50 Marines from Camp Pendleton. And this year, we are doing something different because it is 250 years anniversary for Marine Corps. And Council faculty and I were able to convince the Nixon Library Foundation to open up to welcome the Marines. So we will bring 50 Marines and the hosting families to Nixon Library, hopefully on time at 9 o'clock. And the library will have private tour for the Marines and the family. And also this year, the Marines will be in uniform. I think that is going to be a wonderful and outstanding picture standing in front of Marine One. So I think that's going to be one for me to remember. So that's certainly looking forward to Thanksgiving for the Marines. I would like everybody to have a wonderful Thanksgiving and see everyone for the Santa tour. Thank you. Santa tour in December. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So for my report, obviously, thank you to Councilman Frackleton for organizing our dinners. It was great to get our entire council together to do that for our firefighters, to show our appreciation. And I would like to give special thanks to the A-Shift for giving us the tour of Station 23 and to give us the update on the upcoming expansion and the update on what's going on with that construction. So that'll be great to see that our station is finally going to be getting a facelift. It was also good to see, I imagine everyone saw us, they were leaving our second dinner, that it was good to see residents taking advantage of the free sandbags. And we've had a lot of rain, but more rain is supposed to be coming this week. So I'd just like to let the residents know that if you need sandbags, they're available at Station 23. You just pull up and you fill them yourself and take them away. So they make it really easy for you. I also attended the city selection committee meeting where I got to catch up with other Orange County leaders and was pleased to give blood on November 6th here at City Hall alongside so many other generous Villa Park residents. The Red Cross is always really happy to come to Villa Park because we get such great participation here at City Hall. And I think the first time I ever talked to Councilman McBride was at a blood donation event. I know, you know, he's given two, and, yeah, and it's just really great to give back in that way. So thank you to everyone who participated in that. And with that, we will adjourn to our next regular city council meeting on December 16th, 2025, at 6:30 PM. Thank you for participating this evening, and we wish everyone a wonderful Thanksgiving.